They called the Tuesday, February 6th, 2018 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Mrs. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Legions?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Reminder of the council retreat on Monday, February 19th, from 1:00 to 5:00. I will send you an email just as a reminder next week. Mayor Black and I are putting together the information that we'll present. Also, I've attended several legislative updates with Sarpy County city administrators. Papillion, on behalf of the United Cities, will be sending a letter in opposition of LB 1102, which is an increase to the tax on keynote proceeds from 2% to 4%. Currently, the city pays that tax out of our keynote proceeds, so... And lastly, the city of Papillion, along with the cities of La Vista, Springfield, Bellevue, Gretna, and Sarpy County, received the Economic Partner Award from the Sarpy County EDC for our partnership in the South Sarpy Sewer Agency. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
78-0-ase.
Motion passes. If there's no objection, I would like to amend the agenda and move items F8, 9, and 10 up to this point in the agenda. They're fairly quick items, and we got some development items on the agenda, and so just for those people, if they don't want to hang around, they can have their item acted upon and moved. So if there's no objection, we'll move to item F8. Ready? Item F8, Resolution R180028, a resolution to approve the naming of the community center and the fieldhouse. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180028?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug. Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? I believe the individuals that came up with the name and proposed it are here. Is that the case? Want to come up real quick as a proponent? We'll recognize you. Come on up. Trent, you want to come up too? Trent, more for education for folks since we do publicize this. Name can be a very controversial item. Everybody's got perceptions of what they are and ideas of what they are. We gave a lot of thought of how to pick a name for it. You want to just kind of walk through the process and then introduce them and kind of what we came up with?
Yeah, definitely. We opened up in November, we opened up submissions to the public, invited all the public to submit their naming ideas. Got about 70, a little bit more than 70 submissions. That included residents, staff, council members, kind of all over the map. Then we presented that list to our council members in different groups, and then asked for their feedback, narrowed that down to 10 of the most reoccurring names that you guys picked as your finalists, and then narrowed that down to our five finalist names. How'd you guys rank them from there? Preference on names, kind of all over the map, but the name that we picked was the name that really trended upward in all of your rankings. And I think that we had a lot of great names and pretty much squeezed the creative juices of Papillion. I think we really got to a good final name.
Unveil what the name is.
Papillion Landing.
And it was, and though that type of landing, that theme came up in about three of them. I don't know if that was a railroad theme or...
One theme we did see through the process was there were a lot of people that wanted Papillion on the building, so this was something that accomplished that too, so...
And the name was introduced by two different people? Do you want to introduce them?
Correct. Yes, Irene Morgan and Stephanie Albers. And full disclosure, Stephanie's my wife, so...
And that was not known during the process?
Correct.
So that did not influence the voting?
Correct. Names were, it was anonymous as far as when the names were given to the council people. When she mentioned it, I was like, "You should just go ahead and submit that. It sounds pretty good," so... But anyway, yeah.
Thank you very much. And we'll do more formal recognition probably when we open the building around that as well, so thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I want to point at Trent, you were being kind to the council. You forgot a part of the process. Before we turned to the citizens, the council members met many times with some professionals to try to pick a name, and we completely failed. We could not come to a name. And so then we turned, then we did the smart thing and turned it to the citizens, and the citizens did a much better job than we did, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item F9, Resolution R180027, a resolution to approve a license agreement with Harry Bossard American Legion Post 32, 230 West Lincoln Street, Papillion, Nebraska, regarding the Legion's proposed temporary and limited use of an adjacent small parcel of city park property. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180027? Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
78-0-ase.
Motion passes. Next is item F10, Resolution R180036, a resolution to approve applications for the 2018 summer fireworks season, June 25th through July 4th. If there's no objection, we did publish it as one item for all 10 permits. I'll go ahead and read those 10, and if there's no objection, we'll take them all under one vote. Number one, Bellino Fireworks, Don Bellino, for-profit, 21 years consecutively. Standard Fireworks, Michaela Ripple, for-profit, 21 years consecutive. St. Columbine Hill Shepherds, Arlen Hunter, non-profit, 21 years consecutive. Sarpy County Swim Club, Brian Brushaw, non-profit, 18 years consecutively. Echo Softball, Sean Gomez, non-profit, 18 years consecutive. Tangier Shrine Center, Gary Unger, non-profit, 16 years consecutive. Papillion La Vista Optimist Club, Fred Uy, non-profit, 15 years consecutive. Papillion Spirit Football, Lee Yokumson, non-profit, 12 years consecutive. American Legion Post 32, Joel Carpenter, non-profit, 12 years consecutive. And Wellspring Church, Joe Chase, non-profit, one year. Believe all the applicants indicated they would be here if there's any questions, and if there's no objection, is there a motion to approve all of them under Resolution R180036?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Again, recognize that all the applicants are here. Do we have any opponents? Note for the record, we did get one letter in dated February 1st from Walter Joyner. I gave each of you a copy of that that had concerns with fireworks. It was kind of a general one, but I thought it was appropriate for the engine item, so that will be in the minutes. Do we have any other opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, that's what I wanted to mention, the letter. Just maybe some comments from the chief relative to complaints that we receive, how do we handle them, you know, the hours of when they're supposed to light them off and things like that.
I don't know of any questions that we've had so far in regards to the fireworks.
Well, how about during the time that we're actually, citizens are actually able to light off fireworks, you know, how do you handle complaints that might come in from citizens? What about hours of operations, you know, things like that? How do we address that from the standpoint of those complaints?
They're usually on a case-by-case basis when they make a call to 911 or... Non-emergency number. I know that me and Chief Boz had had a couple of conversations in regards to how we try to tackle that differently this year, and it mostly regarded training of firefighters and police officers on which fireworks were actually legal and then those that are not legal. One of the things that we did find was is there are a number of fireworks that were legalized several years ago that we were unaware of.
So potentially, that can result in some of those concerns with regard to the blast being louder and things like that that are expressed by this particular individual.
Yes, and we decided that after a review of some of the similar ordinances around us, that we didn't think that there needed to be a change in our ordinance per se, but it would be best to tackle that by training our people what to look for, and then in turn maybe even doing some type of social media campaign or even a video on what is legal and what is not legal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote. All 10 are approved. Thank you very much. Back to the regular agenda. Item E1, Ordinance 1799, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to mixed-use MU and R3 Urban Family Residential for the property legally described as part of the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with Tax Lot 5, a tax lot located in the east half of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the northwest corner of Washington Street and Highway 370, the applicant is Royce Enterprises, Inc., Papillion Commons. This public hearing was continued from December 19th, so it's a continuation, so it's already open. I will call for proponents. And Mr. Jobin, as the applicant, we have three related items, and if you want to kind of cover them all, if you wish, we'll carry all of the comments to each of the public hearings so you don't have to repeat unless you want to.
Yes, thank you. That'd be great.
And if you'd state your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant Royce Enterprises, Inc. With me today from Royce Enterprises, which is also a Lockwood Development Company, is Chip James, the owner of Lockwood Development, as well as Bob Begley and Emily O'Connor. And also with me today from Olson and Associates is Katie Underwood, Kellen Hydeman, and Chris Rowling, the traffic engineer, and the consulting engineers on this particular project from Olson and Associates. So I first, I've got a number of slides. I thought it was best that maybe we put them up here, so I hate to draw your attention away from me, but I think that's probably the main focal point of what we want to look at today. I've got a number of slides. I always think of, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. We have a number of slides for you to see. Happy to stop at any point and answer any questions that you might have. Again, this is Papillion Commons, and I'll hit the first slide. Most of you obviously are aware of this particular property. It's approximately 110 acres, and it's located between 84th Street on the east and 90th Street on the west, and the countryside, single-family subdivision is to the north, and of course, Highway 370 is to the south, and then you have your water tower that's right in the middle. It's obviously undeveloped farm ground. It's very rolling hills in nature. It goes up pretty dramatically from 84th Street and then drops back pretty significantly down to 90th Street. So this particular exhibit shows the relationship of the property in, subject property in relationship to some of the other shopping centers that you have in the city. My arrow went away. There it is. Here is the subject property. You have Shadow Lake Town Center, which is on 72nd and 370. You had Settlers Creek, which is on 72nd and Cornhusker, and of course, you have Market Point on 72nd and Giles. We also wanted to show you a number of single-family developments that are either relatively new or currently pending. This is the subject site. Most of you obviously are familiar with these particular developments because they all come before you, but they're all listed there. And what we were able to determine is currently there's about 3136 approved single-family residential sites that have actually been approved by this council in the relatively recent past, and also there are about 520 single-family residential lots that are currently pending. So you have a total of 3,656 new single-family residential lots that are coming online in these various areas that are shadowed or highlighted in yellow. So you can see there's quite a bit of development, as you know, happening within the city of Papillion and the surrounding area of Papillion. So what we're seeking tonight is the change of zone. Today's just the public hearing for that. The final zoning will obviously be approved when there's a formal mixed-use development agreement that, you know, sets forth the actual architectural design, the color palettes, the building materials and such, and things will be honed down significantly between now and when that occurs, which we're hoping is to turn this around relatively quickly on the final plat to get things rolling. We also have the preliminary plat, which you will hear a public hearing and vote on tonight, and we need that to move forward with the final plat to planning commission and of course, to this council with the mixed-use development and the rezoning. And then we have the comprehensive amendment to the, the amendment to the comprehensive plan, and that's the other thing that you have tonight to actually have a public hearing on and vote. And I wanted to call your attention to the, really what is the current comp plan with the city. I know you're most, most of you are familiar with that as well, but I think it's important to note the things and the ideas and the concepts that are set forth in the new center-city concept that we think is very similar and generally consistent to what you have today, which in our proposed mixed-use development, we have walkability, and we really have a true mix of uses throughout the site from 84th Street to 90th Street. And so if you look at the number of items that are listed under the Papillion's new city center concept, you have office mixed-use buildings, you have multifamily housing, there are green areas, there's a trail system. One thing that's different between this and our development is that shows a single-family component. We do not have that in ours, but we do have retail showing up there. There's major retail, there's an expansion of Trumbull Park, and of course, you have the water tower, which won't, will be there forever, right? So we really believe that our proposed development and with the comp plan amendment, it really holds up to the integrity of what I think was in this particular new city center concept, and that is a true mix of uses, walkability. It's not the same in the sense that I think a lot of your governmental buildings were going to be here at one time. That obviously isn't going to happen either based upon what is happening with the city of Papillion and the different places that you've put your public buildings. So, but overall, from a conceptual standpoint, we think we're very consistent with that. So we get to what is our proposed true mixed-use development from 84th Street to 90th Street, and it's developed in two phases primarily. We're going to talk about Phase 1. This is Phase 2, which is about 8.22 acres. This is being retained by the seller. We think it will probably be a civic use of some kind in the future. We've actually requested the rezoning from Ag to R3, just single-family residential, just because it was the easiest placeholder for now with this particular development. But again, we think it will probably be some civic use down the road when the seller decides what to do with it and what we work out with the city as far as what the best use is for that particular property. So it gets to really what the main phase of the development is, which is what we're talking about today primarily. This is 24 lots in Phase 1. There are also four outlots, which by definition, outlots are unbuildable. The outlots are three detention basins. I believe that's Outlet B, Outlet A, and Outlet C over here. Again, you have the trail system running through east and west through Outlet A, and you also have the trail being connected to Trumbull Park as well. We have another exhibit that shows the walkability, the trail systems and the sidewalks, and how everything is interrelated from a pedestrian perspective as well as a vehicular one. We also have another lot here, which I believe is Lot 21. This is the new park area, and this is one of the changes, and we'll go back through this, but if you recall, the park that we had up here was only about a half acre, and we thought in our discussions, I think with some of you, the council members as well as the staff, we thought maybe it was better to have a more prominent park, and so we moved it off of the main drag of Cedar Dale Road and that boulevard feel over to the, next to the water tower, and now it's a little over three acres. We think it's a much better site for the park and will be much more usable at that location. We also show kind of a farmer's market concept that you could have on three acres, so we think it's a much more usable park, and it's a much better location at that, at that spot here next to the water tower. We also, which we'll get into a little later, is that we've also included the trail system that runs through the park area that makes a connection, pedestrian connection to the inline shops, so we think that is a nice addition and a nice feature to the site plan as well. So we get into the uses that we're looking at here, and again, this is what we thought was, makes this special. You know, we were, everyone's looking for something that, you know, what makes this corner special. Obviously, this is an important corner in the city of Papillion. I think everyone wants to be proud of this corner and how it's developed. We do as well. So what we think makes it special is this true mixed-use type feel to this corner. So in going through the various uses, you've got the hotel use, and this is a little different than the last site plan that you saw. I think we've rearranged some uses that we think are better situated. We think in going back to the drawing board and rethinking this, that maybe we, we do think that we have a much better layout. So you still have the hotel up here. What we did is we, if you recall, the assisted living was in this location. We've now moved it to the terminus of Cedar Dale Road, which is sort of the main boulevard coming through with the roundabout. There's talk about, we feel pretty comfortable with who that assisted living user will probably end up being. We thought there might be a very nice water feature or some other kind of public art here, so when you're coming down this boulevard, you'll see something, you know, very, very nice and very visible, which will add a nice amenity to the development. What we also did, if you remember, we had those multifamily pedestal buildings here at the terminus of Cedar Dale Road and the roundabout. What we did is we've now tucked those back behind the assisted living, and now they have some presence on this street coming through here, but they're really tucked behind and they're not visible as you come into the mixed-use center, the shopping center. We have the daycare still being shown here, assisted living here, multifamily here. We have, of course, the inline retail shops shown here, and that is 164,000 square feet of retail shops. Remember, the largest box that's shown within these inline retail shops is 40,000 square feet. That is a very small box. That's what we would refer to as a junior box. A big box would be 80,000 square feet or larger. None of these fall into that category with the largest being 40,000 square feet. And within that 164,000 square feet, we have apparel, there's a grocery store, general commercial, and, and those types of uses that typically are on inline shops. Then we have three or four other commercial strip centers shown, and one of them is here, one of them is here, the other one is, I believe, up here, and the other one is here. And these are just, you know, multi-tenant buildings that will have restaurants and other types of uses that typically go into a small strip center. There's about 63,000 square feet, I think, in those strip centers that are shown there. We also have four distinct plaza spaces. Of course, we have the park that I just talked about next to the water park. We have a plaza space on the hard corner of 84th and 370. There's two patios that we're calling for, so instead of that park coming in, you'll actually have a nice patio looking at the boulevard look, and we have an elevation and sort of a boulevard view here in one of our slides down the road. And then we have, of course, some plaza space over here by the office area. I guess I should point out that also the mixed use, we still have this office space along here, which is 81,000 square feet of office, and then also you have some office here. We're not sure if this will stay office. There's about 80,000 square feet here as well. This could be a movie theater, a small movie theater that we're looking at. And then, of course, you have the C store and some, the banks are here along Cedar Dale. So again, adding to our true mixed-use type center. So those are the plaza spaces. You got the patios, you got the hard corner, you got the park, and you got the plaza space over here that will be very distinct. And again, remember, you have this kind of special feature with the roundabout at that And so really just to recap, the changes from the original site plan that you all saw before, and this particular site plan is the park placement from this location to this location, also the increase in size from the half acre to now a little over three acres. You have the assisted living being moved here instead of the multifamily, with the multifamily being put behind the assisted living, and then you have, of course, the nice boulevard feature here at the roundabout. We also added some on-street parking onto Cedar Dale Road as far as the boulevard coming in, and then, of course, we relocated some of the office. But again, this is all conceptual, and as you move forward and you find end-users and things change, this could very well be a theater that, there's two or three different theater chains that they've been talking to as well, but they're the small, you know, four-plex type movie theaters, not the large ones. And then also, of course, we added that trail system and the pedestrian connectivity between the park and the junior boxes at this location here that comes through and serves the park as well as these inline retail shops. So this is the sidewalk plan, the walkability. You can see in the darker blue is the trail system, if you will. The red is all sidewalks, so you can see that there is walkability throughout the center connections from a pedestrian perspective made both north and south and east and west. This, this is the next slide, and this really shows, you know, how walkable this particular mixed-use development is. Remember, we're talking about 110 acres, and you're looking from here, so this little trail from here to here, from the northern inline shop to Trumbull Park is only .34 miles, and that's a path there. These are just different examples. So in the red that you have here is only .24 mile path. Again, from here to here, you only have a .15 mile path. So we're showing that these distances really aren't very far to walk between these various uses, and there is this pedestrian connectivity between all the various uses within this particular development. So this brings us to the architectural renderings or the conceptual architectural renderings. This would be looking west down Cedar Dale. You know, it's a little, you know, it won't be exactly like this, obviously, as, you know, we pointed out before, you won't always have the trees in bloom, but this is kind of a conceptual look. West to the assisted living way in the back is as far as the terminus. And again, all these architectural concepts will be drilled down and put into the mixed-use development agreement, so, you know, then we're going to be talking about color palettes and building material choices and architectural themes, but these are just some ideas of how this will look, and we think it'll be very, very nice. So these are just some conceptual retail renderings, the front view of the shops. You can't get a real good feel here, but again, these are details to work out between now and the final plat and the mixed-use development agreement that you'll be seeing and reviewing and approving down the road, but it will, and we'll be working with staff closely to come up with... But it will, and we'll be working with staff closely to come up with something really nice. And I should also mention that, you know, we do have the 370 corridor guidelines that are, that this property is subject to as well, as far as the design of the various buildings. This is a conceptual rendering of a two-story office building. And then, it gets into, I want to just talk about the public improvements that this project will be involved with. There's, there's a relatively serious problem, from what I understand, that we found out that the sanitary sewer that runs east of this development is, is really outdated and is not in great shape. And so, the, with this development, there'll be a sewer that will extend about three-quarters of a mile east and north of the site. If you look here, this is Matthews Drive here. So, it, this, there'll be a parallel sewer, sanitary sewer, that will run in this location and connect into the main sewer here. This cost of this sanitary sewer is about $2.6 million, but will improve service to properties to the west, the south, the east, and this particular project. So, that's one thing that will be fixed by way of this development. We thought it was important to mention. The other thing that we get into is the street systems. And again, we have Chris Rollin here, who's a traffic engineer. He can talk about traffic volumes and where he thinks the traffic is going to go. I'll touch on it lightly here, but I'll take 90th Street first. Of course, you have the signal, 370 and 90th Street. And then, you have four lanes from Highway 370 up to Devon. And then, from Devon all the way to Grunther, clear here to the north, it will be a three-lane section that will be constructed. And so, you will have really three entry points into the center. This one is Scott Road, this one is Devon, this one is Rawhide, and then, of course, you've got Grunther way up here to the north. This intersection at Rawhide, it was shown once as a public street. It probably will now be a private drive, but it will essentially function like a public street to allow connectivity into, into the center. And then, of course, you have the main public road that runs through the site from 90th Street up through here to the roundabout, and then, of course, Cedar Dale Road to 84th Street or Washington Street, which, that location will be signalized and will be full movement. There's also a dedicated right turn that will be constructed into the center if you're heading south on 84th Street. And then, there'll be two dual lefts if you're heading north on 84th Street into the main entrance of the, the center at, at Cedar Dale Road. And also, you have Matthews Drive to the north will be the other intersection. And then, of course, you have Scott Road to the south that will be the other entry point into the center, and those will be right in, right out only. The projected valuation of this particular development is a little over 119 million. So, it's 119,310,000 dollars, so it's not an insignificant development. There's a lot going on here, again emphasizing the true mixed-use center of, or the true mixed-use nature of this particular development on 110 acres. I, we, I thought this was interesting. You can't, hopefully, you can see it well enough. But we did do a comparison of Shadow Lake Center and overlaid it on top of this. And you'll notice, so, the, I guess that's green or blue-green. Everyone always makes challenging colors when they're half-color blind. But in any event, I think it's a blue-green, and that shows the outline of what Shadow Lake would look like on this particular site. And remember, Shadow Lake has a million square feet of retail only. It's, it's a million square feet of retail. And this is, again, 164,000 square feet of inline shops, but this shows just our retail portion in comparison with Shadow Lake. Then, we put Market Point, for example, over the top of it as well. And, and if you remember, Market Point was about 68 acres, and it had 550,000 square feet of retail. But again, no other uses were involved in that particular development. And so, this shows Market Point overlaid on, on this particular development. So, but I think you have here that what makes this development special is those different mixes of uses between the office and the daycare and the hotel and the assisted living and the multifamily and the commercial retail inline, the commercial retail pad sites, and all the things that sort of interrelate to each other to make this development, you know, what it is and what this corner can be. And we think that is really important because, you know, the retail people won't be there if the office people and the multifamily and the assisted living people won't be there. The office people, the, the office people won't be there unless there's retail people there or shops there and shopping opportunities and restaurant opportunities. And, and so, they all kind of play into each other to what we think will make this a great development and one that we can be proud of, and hopefully, the city of Papillion can be proud of. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, we have the whole team here to answer questions as well, and they can add to anything that I've missed or they want to expand upon. But with that, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank, thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Anybody who wants to speak in favor? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the staff. My name is Steve Sunday. I'm here to represent the Trumble family, the owners of this property. My mother is Charlotte Trumble-Sundy. She was born in the house that sits on the farm there now, as, as was my Uncle Dwight Trumble, who's seated behind me with his wife Betty, my aunt. We have been, the Trumble family has been in Sarbee County and around Papillion since before the Civil War. That's a long time, right? And, and members of our family throughout the decades have given their time, their, their blood and sweat and treasure to this community. And we have not taken on this project lightly. I can tell you that since the time that we attended the meeting to approve the master plan some 20 years ago, I'm guessing, it was approximately that long ago, we were encouraged by the city leaders at that time to accept the master plan, and we were wooed, I would say, to, to do that. And we, we did. We looked at what the master plan envisioned, and we got on board with that. And since that time, we've been approached by innumerable suitors to purchase our land for various types of projects, and none until now has, have, in our opinion, met the expectations of that master plan until this one. This is a true mixed-use project. Now, I would, I would suggest to all you members, you're going to hear opponents tonight talk about the traffic and problems like that. Well, I can tell you that any development of this property will affect traffic. That, that's for sure. But what did we promise the landowners and what did we promise the community some 20 years ago? We promised a, a master plan, mixed use. The only thing that's not in this project that was in the master plan, that I can see, are the city buildings. But the city's already taken steps since that time and gone another direction. Well, that's not anybody's fault, right? But, but those that decided to do something else with those city buildings. But this otherwise meets the criteria. In fact, I was at the Planning Commission meeting when this was approved, and one of the Planning Commission members asked Mr. Sturzma whether, in his opinion, other than the city buildings, this project meets with the spirit of the master plan. And his answer was, yes, it does. And so, I think that's important. I also think it's important, and what I think maybe didn't get mentioned is, is the developers are going to be assisting in a large part on the costs of these sewer projects and the road extension, expansion project. I, I don't know the exact percent, but I know it's a lot. And, and these are expenses a city would have to otherwise dig deep into its own pockets. So, so I would suggest that we should approve this project because it's bringing great value to our community, for one thing. It meets the spirit of the master plan that we all agreed upon 20 years ago. It's offering office space, assisted senior living, a great path plan through the whole thing, hotel, high-end family residential, not some cheap apartment buildings. These are quality apartment buildings. That's a necessary part of this project to make it work. I would just hope that this council would approve this tonight and not send, you know, a very high-quality developer here who knows his business and does good projects. Don't send him away tonight empty-handed because the city got too greedy and wanted too much and made this project untenable, because that's, we're close to that now. I know, I know Lockwood's made a lot of concessions, and our families make concessions, too. We wanted to sell that eight-and-a-half acre parcel that we're hanging on to. One of our concessions to make this work is that we'd hang on to it. So, I would take any questions anybody has, if that's permitted, but that's about all I have to say.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Anybody speaking in favor? And again, if you'd state your name for the record.
Absolutely. My name is Chelsea Castro. Thank you for being patient with my little one, but this is important to be, to be here. I have been involved in this since the town hall meeting that was held back July, and I was an opponent of this development, and I even spoke at the Planning Commission as an opponent to this development. However, what I've seen tonight is a huge improvement from their original plant, plants. I see more green space. I see a park, which is everything that I kind of was asking for. It was just concrete from 110 acres, and I don't think that's what we need. So, I do think this development is going to be beneficial to Papillion and to the residents of the community. I do see that there are still improvements to be made to that plan, but I'm happy to see more green space in that plant. The only remaining issue I really have with the proposed layout that they presented tonight is the hotel. I live on 1001 South Adams, so I kind of face down into that development. At the Planning Commission meeting, they talked about how the elevation would be almost a story higher than the neighborhood behind it, to the north of it. So, if you're going to put a hotel there, and it's going to be three stories, four stories high, we're looking at four to five stories of a building. One major improvement I do see on that hotel is they did face the entrance to the west. Before, it was facing south, so it was just a wall of windows, what my property would be looking into. So, it's compromised now that it's facing the other way, and it's just going to be that shorter side facing the neighborhood. But my only concern is the elevation of that hotel. How big is it? How, you know, is it going to block my view of the rest of the development is what I'm concerned about? But they kind of, they changed my opinion tonight with the layout of the new development and the green space. I would maybe propose changing the park and putting that back by the creek and by the movie theater. If that movie theater does come in, you've got a family-focused area, and they could hit the movie theater and then go play over in the park or vice versa, and you've got a condensed area for the families to go to. So, I do think that they've made great improvements, but there's also improvements that need to continue.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other proponents? Do you have any opponents? Anybody who wants to speak against? Anybody neutral? And if you'd state your name for the record.
My name is Roy Williams, and my address is 10821 North 5750 West Highland, Utah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes. I am the Chief Investment Officer for Phillips Edison &amp; Company Real Estate Partners. We kind of use an acronym called PREP for our company. We're based out of, out of Salt Lake City. We also have offices in Cincinnati as well, Cincinnati, Ohio. Pico Real Estate Partners was a spinoff from Phillips Edison &amp; Company, and Phillips Edison &amp; Company is the largest private owner of grocery-anchored shopping centers in the country. And I myself have been involved with the company for over 23 years. I, I come before you tonight really as a neutral party, just to give some thought for consideration. The, we are in the final stages of our due diligence process to make a significant investment into Papillion. I'm under confidentiality right now in terms of disclosing much more than that, but we, but it is a significant retail project within your, within your city. As we've been looking at not only the project that we are contemplating acquiring, and I should also mention that we, we are operators of shopping centers. We're not just third-party investors. We, our company is vertically integrated with leasing and property management and all the functions to operate shopping centers. As we've gone through our due diligence process, certainly, we've been made aware, we've, of Papillion Commons, and, and certainly, there are some strengths with what is proposed in this development and that's before you this evening. As new development comes online, it works, it can work as a whole to create more synergy and success with other businesses that are already established within the city. However, it's, it's important, I think, to consider that, as the applicant pointed out, that there is a significant amount of retail already within the city limits. What I'm speaking to this evening, just for the next few minutes, is really the retail component. You know, office and, and family, single-family residents, multifamily residents, all that green space, and, and that is just, it's great. What I'd like you to consider tonight is, is, is the market ready, Papillion, ready to absorb another 240,000 square feet of retail space? There certainly is opportunity to create retail in a, in a development such as Papillion Commons that would support, as the applicant mentioned, the office and the residential components. There's, there's certainly room for that. But as far as 240,000 square feet, where each of the boxes are 40,000 square feet or less, you have to understand that there's a significant amount of disruption in the retail market today, and the, the pool of retailers is, is shrinking. A lot of the media is attributing that to e-commerce, to the Amazons of the world and other forces. But in a lot of ways, related to the e-commerce, retailers have become, some retailers have kind of fallen asleep at the wheel and become less relevant to consumers. And consumers are looking, looking for a different experience in their shopping. And so, as we look at the retail world, the majority of the retail that's out there is 40,000 square feet or less. There are boxes that are 80,000 square feet, very few. And so, you know, the, the opportunity to bring new to market, and I'm not sure exactly what the definition of that might be, but to bring new to market retail in Papillion with an additional 240,000 square feet in addition to what's already here and what's transpiring in your retail centers today, I think is very limited. I know there's a, there's a, we, we've been before council and just in the, in the same position as the applicant this evening, seeking for approvals. And I know it's, and we are capitalists and believe in free market and let the market kind of dictate what, what happens. But I think as far as, and so, there's a tendency not to pick winners or losers, you know, just let the, let the market kind of drive that. Well, I believe, and I'm going to make a general statement because I'm, I've only been to your fair city four or five times, but from what we've seen and all of our due diligence, I believe that the, the city administration, the staff, the US council members, and the citizens of the community have made great decisions in the past to make your city very successful and actually be winners as, as a city. And so, I would like the council to consider, as, as they consider Papillion Commons this evening, what is the best for the city? And so, the questions that need to be asked, I think, are, again, what is the amount of retail that would overlap the existing? How does that impact the, the existing inventory of retail? I can tell you that one project that the applicant pointed out, which is the Shadow Lake Town Center, it's not news to you, but you know, our observance of that center is a loss of Gordmans of 40,000 square feet, a loss of Office Max at 18,000 square feet, the loss of Charming Charlie's, the loss of GNC, the loss of all the fashion tenants a few years back, most recently with Wheatfield Bakery going dark. There are, there are retail projects that require vigilance and additional capital to be brought into your city to, to make them successful once again and sustainable. And it's my opinion that bringing on an additional or approving additional amount of square footage shown in this plan is counterproductive to that, to that goal. I do think there's room for retail on the site. I think, you know, there could be a phasing consideration in terms of the amount of retail and the size of boxes that come on. I think there could be consideration for, you know, holding the applicant to new retail to the market, which would imply a non-compete for existing retail that's, that's within your, the city, the city limits. So, with that, I just wanted to, again, introduce myself, let you know that our company is in the process of finalizing our due diligence to make a significant investment in Papillion, and we would trust that the city council would move forward in a prudent way this evening and with patience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in a neutral position? Yes.
Hi there. I'm Donna Wilcox, and we live at 901 Rawhide Road. And it's great to be here with the city council. Never done this before. I would just like to say that I agree totally with the gentleman that was just speaking about the retail that's going on. I've been concerned about the storefronts being emptied and so forth. The other thing is, the main thing I wanted to talk about is, we live on the corner of Rawhide and 90th Street, and I know the people that live along 90th Street there are very concerned about how 90th is going to be widened. We really don't want to be closer to the highway if at all possible. So, if, when 90th Street is widened, if it would go to the east, be widened that way instead of to the west, where you're backing up on people's backyards, our side yard, and I know that is city property, you know, along there, they own that land, but it's a real nice entrance into our community, and people really treasure that and value that when they come in there and see how beautiful our area is. So, I don't know if you know now how 90th is going to be widened. I, I know up to Devon Drive, we used to live on Devon Drive, that's going to be four lanes and then go down to three lanes all the way up until it joins into Fillmore. So, if that could be clarified, that would be nice. And also, this area that continues the street here, you said this might be private or Rawhide, is that going to be a private road, a small road, or whatever? What is the continuation of Rawhide going to be in here?
The resubmitted application called for that to be a private road.
A private road. And then, right across there is, is the, a park? Is that correct?
Detention park, detention.
A park, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to note for the record, we did get one letter in, and it was at the last public hearing. I think we got it in the minutes, but I just want to make sure that, and everybody has a copy of it, from Mr. Frederick Skinner at 1301 Devon Circle. He had a number of items he wanted to raise as well, and I think you had that before. Any other proponents, opponents, or neutral? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Mung, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank you for catching me.
My name is Katie Rainbolt. I live on 1307 Scott Road. My backyard backs up to 90th, which for the first time tonight, I heard was going to four lanes, which we get enough vibrations from that road now, so just to beg to go to the east when you add on. But also, the sidewalk that follows 90th up to the school, if it can stay on the west side of 90th, so the kids can walk up to the corner of Gunther, and there's crossing guards will help them. I don't want them to think they should cross, you know, at Devon where the development and the lights going to be, because then there's too much traffic and entries and all that stuff. So, my concern is the kids walking on the sidewalk, and the sidewalk stay where it is.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Mr. Mungard.
Mr. Williams, can you come back up here? Well, I'm glad you raised that question, because you're talking about a subject matter that I had a debate with a, with a constituent on. This was a person who was expressing concern about the empty bays that we're starting to see in Shadow Lake. And they were, they were asking that same question that you seem to be asking. Well, okay, why is it we would approve additional retail if we already see our current retail going away? And, and you're talking not only about that, but about apparently somebody else that might want to invest in, in, you know, in the community. My problem is, well, how does government do that? It's one thing, as you point out, if, if we're against picking winners and losers, because I just don't feel qualified to pick winners and losers, frankly. And I don't think it's our role to pick winners and losers. I think that's, I don't want to turn it over completely to the market to dictate. But, you know, you raise honest questions that I don't know the answer to, and maybe you can give us some guidance on, well, what role do we play in doing this? How do we go about encouraging retail, having space for retail, without picking winners and losers?
Right. Well, I appreciate the question. I hope I can address that in some, some fashion. I, I think, I think the challenge, you know, before, before you this evening, and whenever you're talking about future development and kind of this notion of picking winners or losers, it's really not to focus so much on the actual development itself, but how does the decision impact the, the city? In other words, we'll just take, we'll just take Shadow Lake as an example, and excuse me if I get my facts wrong on this, but I believe when Shadow Lake Town Center was developed, there was a significant city contribution in terms of infrastructure that was funded through bonds. I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $16 million. And that has a life of about 20 years, and so, there's, there's somewhat, again, loosely 10 years remaining on that obligation. Those bonds are paid for out of sales tax that's generated from the property. So, I think one of the questions that could be asked is, does bringing on an additional 240,000 protect that investment or put that investment at risk? The investment that the city's already made? And there is development language. There's opportunities to structure language within a development agreement that would, I think, provide that, that protection. So, it's not so much picking one development over another, it's whether or not the decisions made by, you know, the council on behalf of the citizens is protecting the city's interest, particularly in those investments that have already occurred and that are in place.
Well, okay, you, I'll just tell you that you've raised some interesting questions and made some interesting suggestions that I hope we follow through on and looking at in the development agreements. But I, I'll tell you the same thing I had to tell that citizen, that, well, I just don't think it's fair for me to sit here and tell this developer, you can't have retail because I want to protect Shadow Lake. I guess I ended up saying, well, that's not my role to protect Shadow Lake. I understand that it's my role to protect our investment, the city's investment. It's our, my role to do what's best for the citizens, and I think what's best for the citizens, so we don't have bankrupt shopping centers. But I couldn't come up with a good answer as to why I should turn this place down just to protect some other business person's investment. So, I'm glad you raised the questions, because I don't know the answers to them. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is this directed to me, or?
No, I have a question for the developers, so whoever's going to represent and answer this question. So, I, I had some same concerns that, that my colleague over there did with regard to the retail component of this. And obviously, I think the gentleman mentioned, you know, about non-compete and things like that, whether that's something that would be considered from the perspective of going to some of the other developments within the Papillion area and saying, come, come over to this location, I've got a great opportunity for you over here. But I guess Chip, and you guys have been doing this a long time, can you talk a little bit about that same situation that this gentleman talked about from the perspective is that this is not something that you're going to be throwing a bunch of retail in tomorrow, assuming it's going to be phased over time? Obviously, it's something that, that you look at from a development perspective, is that what do you need in order to be able to, to make this whole thing work? Obviously, it's mixed-use, so you have, you know, some residential component, and so, what impact does that have on, on you from the standpoint of, of the retail that you're proposing, and you see some of those other vacant storefronts that exist within this area?
I think I can say a few things, and I can turn it over to Chip if he has anything to say. But I agree with you, and I appreciate your comment. You can't pick winners and losers, and I've always said, and I've been a strong believer of this in my entire career, that development begets development. And if you recall, when we were doing Market Point, Shadow Lake came and opposed Market Point, remember, because they were worried about it? But, look, both developments survived, and they've survived for the last 15, 16, 18 years, and they're still continuing to survive. What I would tell you is, I don't think it's the place of the council to pick winners and losers, and if you do truly believe in the free market system, how could you ever agree to a non-compete? That would just be, I mean, that'd be a non-starter. I mean, no one would ever walk into that situation. While it's not our intent to pull existing retailers over, we're not out-marketing for them. Chip's been traveling all over the place, attending all sorts of conferences, looking for new-to-market type retailers in the Papillion market area. Now, they may have one or two places in Omaha market, but none in Sarpy County, so we're looking to bring those retailers down here. But development begets development. Opportunities arise no matter where you are. You know, if you're in a shopping center that is like Shadow Lake, well, you reinvent yourself, and you find new ways to market things maybe a little differently. That is how you compete in a free market system. You don't provide for non-competes, and you don't pick winners and losers, and you let the free market system work, it seems to me. So, I don't know if you have anything to add.
All I'd say is that we're...
Chip, could you, just since the first time, can you state your name for the record?
Chip James, under Lockwood. We are not targeting any of those retailers down at Shadow Lake. I'm sure that is the center of which we're referring to. The big two that they lost, were really lost because the retailers were performing poorly, not because Papillion ran them out of the market and said, we are over-retail. I mean, Gordmans failed all over the place. It didn't fail in Papillion. So, I would say that, you know, there are going to be vacancies at any of our shopping centers in any markets we go to, but if it was a, if it was a market-related collapse, like you have over-retailed this market, that collapse, you know, would have happened to good retailers. I mean, Gordmans wasn't like, all of a sudden, you know, they closed 55 stores. You were just one of them. So, I'd say Shadow Lake will have, we're not going after any of their tenants. Now, if a tenant is going to leave the market, because they're going to leave Shadow Lake, I would not want Papillion to lose them, because they have no other opportunity. And the only other thing I would say is, I'm sure we will compete on new tenants, but that should be the way the marketplace works for you guys, and that's the way. But we are not looking to poach anybody from Shadow Lake. At a million feet, they just mentioned 40,000 feet of Gordmans and 18,000 feet of Office Max. I mean, that's 58,000 feet of, I mean, it's 5.8% of the shopping center. So, I wouldn't say it's like a disastrous hole in the market.
So, so Chip, how many previous developments have you done in, in the metro area? Obviously, this is your first one coming to Omaha. This is not something new, so...
You mean to Papillion?
Yeah. Excuse me, to Papillion. This, you're not first time in Papillion, but you're in the Omaha metro area, you're in Douglas-Sarpy County area. Talk a little bit about, you know...
I mean, we've done the grocery-anchored shopping center at 156 Maple. We've done a huge office development at 132 Pacific Sterling Ridge. We've done retail developments out in Legacy. We've done a shopping center in Arkansas. We've been around. I mean, we're looking right now at doing a shopping center in Lawrence, Kansas, Far North Dakota. So, we see this retail competition everywhere.
So, so talk to me a little bit about how long it would take to phase this total...
Well, we couldn't phase 160,000 feet. I mean, it's too small, I mean, and he would probably agree with me, you know, you couldn't build this one retailer at a time. I mean, there's only eight retailers in our lineup. I mean, they all need each other to survive. I mean, if, if I proposed that we build two retailers at a time, nobody will sign a lease. I mean, they all have co-tenancy clauses. So, and again, not one of our retailers on this site plan is, is coming from there, and not one of them is in Papillion currently of our eight. Now, if you wanted to get into the small stuff, like talking about GNC, I don't know what'll happen with 1,500-foot tenants. They move all the time. God forbid anybody would want to have a community that started saying, you can't let your small tenants move around. I mean, that would just be, I can't even imagine how that would work in a community saying, GNC, you can't, or whoever it might be. You know, Great Clips, you can't relocate. We don't want you to, I mean, that just can't become the way we, we operate. But on the big boxes, I, I understand the worry. We looked at buying Shadow Lake, too. So, I mean, I understand it, but there's nobody, you know, those are only two box vacancies, and we're not going after any of the people that are still there.
Okay. I have some questions with regard to traffic, but I'll yield if this conversation wants to continue on this.
And we're still in public hearing, so next item, we'll have council discussion as well. Any other comments for public hearing? Again, if you'd state your name for the record.
My name is Irene Morgan. I live at 2110 Lee Circle, Papillion, 68133. And I didn't come to talk tonight, but listening to the discussion tonight, as a small business owner, I can tell you that we do need more retail space. We do need office space. As an entrepreneur, it was very difficult to find locations. The existing locations that are open out there, the rents are extremely high, therefore, that's why they're sitting empty. These people don't want to help small business people get started by lowering their rents. The more businesses start, are opening up, the rents will lower for us small business owners to be able to afford and come out and help the community by building our own businesses.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R170226, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as part of the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with Tax Lot 5, a tax lot located in the east half of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of Washington Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Royce Enterprises, Inc., Papillion Commons. Again, this is a continuation. I'll open the public hearing. Well, it is open, I'll continue it. Proponents will carry all the comments over from the prior one.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Royce Enterprises, Inc. Again, with me today from Royce Enterprises, Inc. is Chip James, Bob Bagley, and Emily O'Connor. Also with me today from Olson Associates Consulting Engineers on this project are Katie Underwood, Kellen Hydeman, and Chris Rollin, who's the traffic engineer. Obviously, this preliminary plat will allow us to move forward with the final plat and mixed-use development agreement consistent with the amendment to the comprehensive development plan to get back to this council for a final project. So, with that, understanding that the prior testimony continues, I just am here for questions regarding the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Any other proponents? And again, prior comments will carry over as well.
Steve Sunday, again. I failed to mention the first time, and I just wanted to add that the expansion of 90th Street is to three lanes, not four. Ninetieth Street is to three lanes, not four, correct? And I believe it will increase the safety of the schoolchildren on their way to school, not increase it. Anybody that's familiar with Ninetieth Street, number one, knows what bad shape it's in. There's potholes all over the place, and it's a narrow two-lane road. And just a foot or two from that pockmarked road is a sidewalk where our children walk to Trumble Park School. And at one point, it's right there along the road. And I believe that's a dangerous situation. And what we're doing here, we're widening the road. We can obviously improve the sidewalk at the same time. And I would also add that there's a park trail over there in the development that leads right to Trumble Park School. So, if a parent wants to walk their child across Ninetieth Street to get them started, they can then just pick up the trail and walk all the way to school without any traffic whatsoever. So, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sunday, I have a question.
Oh, Mr. Mindgard.
Mr... Okay, I'm going to pose a question to you that was posed to me by a citizen.
Certainly.
What's going to happen to your barn? I don't...
You didn't get the news. The barn burned down last summer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And we still don't know how or why.
That's a good answer. Thank you. I wish I'd known, I wish I'd told that to my constituent. It seemed pretty smart. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other proponents? Opponents? Neutral?
Again, understanding that my previous comments move forward, I just want to make a point of...
Can you restate your name real quick, just for the record?
Roy Williams, 10821 North, 5750 West, Highland, Utah. I just wanted to make a point of clarification. Any suggestion that I made regarding non-compete doesn't apply in terms of context to new retailers coming to the market. You know, we understand that if we have, if Shadow Lake has a forty thousand square foot vacancy or fifty thousand square foot vacancy, any future tenant would decide, you know, where they want to be, whether it's Shadow Lake or whether it's a future development of Papillion Commons. So, I just wanted to make that point of clarification. And in terms of those types of development agreements, we've worked within parameters of those agreements. We have examples of development of language that actually has been adopted by municipalities to, again, protect the city's interests in investments that they've made, in this case, retail, retail commercial properties.
Mr. Mindgard.
Okay, I'm going to rely on your expertise again. I'll point out that Papillion's sales tax is a half percent higher than most of the surrounding area. Is that something that gets factored into the decisions of people such as your clients who are looking at areas to invest in? Is that a pro or a con, or nothing at all?
Well, I'm sure it plays the economics of, you know, the total cost of doing business in a particular jurisdiction or location. I'm sure it plays into consideration with retailers. I don't know how much a half a percent or whatever that amount is would play into that in the overall decision. So, I, you know, I can't really speak to that specifically. As far as, you know, I just want to correct, not really correct, but just provide additional information in terms of what the applicant has stated previously, that Shadow Lake Town Center currently sits at about seventy-five percent, or twenty-five percent vacant. When you look at a million square feet, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. There's a lot of shops kind of hidden in line that are vacant. Some have been vacant from the beginning, others are second-generation, third-generation space. The obvious ones, when you drive the perimeter, as the applicant has noted, is, you know, the former Gordmans, which, again, had nothing to do with the location of being in Papillion or the market. It was a corporate and global decision to close those stores. The fact is that there's a significant amount of vacancy there. I think twenty-five percent is significant. And when we're looking at replacing those tenants, again, the field or the pool of retailers to come in and backfill those spaces, it's shrinking, not expanding. So, I just wanted to make those clarifications.
Thank you. Any other? This will be a rebuttal, and then we'll close the public hearing.
Yes, Larry Jobin. You know, I believe that Shadow Lake was developed through the use of sanitary improvement districts, so there were no revenue bonds that were relying on to be repaid strictly from that development. I believe that it was a sanitary improvement district, much like Market Point was, much like this development will be, in which eventually the city annexes it. Why? Because there's sales tax benefits. And that debt that would otherwise be paid through the ad-vocative real estate tax is really absorbed amongst the citizens generally of Papillion. And so, you're not relying on the revenue of that particular development to pay back the city and their bonds. And Chris, I think you would probably agree with that. But I want to make that clarification. I don't think any bonds are outstanding, waiting for revenue to be derived strictly from that particular development to pay off that debt that was used to put in the public improvements that were needed at that point in time.
We did issue general obligation bonds, so you are correct from that standpoint, but we have dedicated sales tax revenue specifically for the retirement of that bond. Yes.
And that's a common model with Market Point, Settlers Creek, each that were developed with SIDs. And then, when the retail come in, we do a partial annexation. And part of that equation, if it makes sense, is the sales tax generated from that, so we absorb the proportional amount of the debt. So, whether it's a Shadow Lake, a Market Point, a Settlers Creek, same type of conversation.
Right. But the debt is spread amongst the taxpayers generally, correct? In addition to the sales tax that's generated from that particular project?
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to call your attention to, that it's still, the bonds are being repaid by the tax base generally.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R17026? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Gaines. Council discussion, Mr. Florence.
You know, so I have a couple of things here. You know, this is a big deal. And I think we have a lot of folks here, you know, and it strikes me is, you know, you have a family with a farm who kind of made a commitment twenty years ago, as the legend goes. And you have people who have houses that butt up against Ninetieth Street who are going to be impacted. And by the way, that impact's real. You know, even if it's three lanes and it moves ten feet closer to your house or your fence line, that's a pretty big deal. I mean, there's no way around that. And so, I have a couple of questions, partly for the city here, that I'd like to get answered. So, first one is to Chris. So, for the general obligation, and what is written up here, the summary by the city, the synopsis, we talk about the general obligation. Can you just talk to us about what that is and why it's important?
Yes, Mr. Florence. Currently, as you noted in the staff report, the debt-to-value ratio proposed is 6.8 percent. And that is certainly over our guideline of 4 percent. Now, granted, city staff is working with the developer to look for solutions to address that debt-to-value ratio. We're in the preliminary stages of that, and those details would be embedded in a subdivision agreement that will come back to you for final consideration with the final plat.
Okay. And so, ideally, where do we want to be? I think you said that.
Ideally, we'd like to be at 4 percent. And again, when an SID issues debt, again, if the city were wishing to annex, we would inherit all that debt, similar to what we talked about with Shadow Lake Town Center earlier.
Okay. Okay. And so, let's stay on Shadow Lake for just a second. We had a little conversation about, what do we call it, new-to-market versus existing, so cannibalization, whether they come from one place or another. And as my colleague here said, we don't want to pick winners and losers. But, so if we were to have someone come from Shadow Lake, or you name the place, inside of the city, and they come to the new development, what does that mean to us? Is it a real financial impact as far as sales tax? I mean, what are we talking about there?
Well, if I understand your question, you're talking about a retailer moving within the city limits of Papillion, whether from Shadow Lake moving to Papillion Commons, I'm assuming, or some other spot. So, granted, if that movement happens within city limits, there's really no impact to us. We still collect sales tax revenue. If that same development would move into a sanitary improvement district outside the corporate limits of the city, then certainly there would be an impact to us in the loss of the sales tax revenue.
Okay. So, this will be an SID, and so will we have a loss of revenue? Or no, because it's inside the city limits?
As it's presented, it is currently not inside the city limits. It is being presented as a sanitary improvement district. Now, we have had conversations with the developer about the potential for a partial annexation or a full annexation if the numbers can make sense. So, there has been that discussion, but absent an annexation, we would collect no sales tax from this development.
Okay. All right. Thank you. My next question goes to Mark. Oh, did you want to speak? Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't see you step up there.
Public hearing's closed. Oh, the public hearing's closed. But if a council member has a question for you...
I'll come back to you.
Okay.
All right. Yes, I will come back. All right, so the next, I got two questions for you, Mark. So, in the staff report, we have this, you know, plan where we had medium density versus high density, as it is in the comprehensive plan. So, just talk to us the difference between your medium density and high density, as it was outlined in the staff report there. Do you remember where that's at?
Are you looking at the changes zones staff report or the plat?
Yes. It's right above fiscal impact, that paragraph. We need to make the reports shorter, I think.
Are you referring to, let's see, the paragraph that starts with the proposed mixed-use district?
Yes.
So, that paragraph was intended to explain why we need to do an amendment to the comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive plan has what we call a sub-area plan for this particular site. And so, it's much more detailed than what you might find on other sites, where it might just say medium-density residential, or high-density residential, or just mixed-use, or even commercial. This site had an actual plan that showed location of buildings and very specific breakdown of uses. And so, it would have been very hard for the applicant, you know, short of coming in and with a plan that was almost identical to what was identified in that sub-area plan, to be consistent and not have to do an amendment to this comprehensive plan. And so, in terms of medium density versus high density, the way that our comprehensive plan breaks those down is, medium density is residential that is up to approximately twelve units per acre. Anything over that is considered high density. And the way that our regulations work, it's usually pretty difficult to get over nineteen or twenty units per area, or per acre, when you get into the high-density developments. Is that, am I answering your question?
You are. So, for citizens who said, "Hey, originally, this plan was for single-family, and so now we're going to go to high-density," that's what this addresses, right? Do I have that right, or no?
Yeah. So, in terms of overall density, by going to high-density, you actually get probably a similar number of actual people living in the development, but it's on a smaller area. So, it goes from a lower to a medium density, and of a larger number of acres to a smaller number of acres. I don't, the applicant may know the exact breakdown of population, but you actually don't get a lot more people, but you get a smaller, get those people located in a smaller geographic area.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask you this, and I know you're not an expert on this. So, then, from what you just said, if you, when we talk about kids, or whether they're going to Trumble, or whether they're going to the junior high or the high school, what I heard you say, as it translated into my mind, is that the number of kids would be reasonably the same. True, in your opinion?
Yeah. In fact, the applicant did a study. They got the actual ratios that the school district uses to project number of students. And this development, actually, it's projected to create fewer students. I think they projected a total of eighty students, whereas the previous plan would have had a projected ninety students, total impact on the school district.
Okay. Okay. So, shifting gears here a little bit, we've heard a lot about traffic and the impact that the road improvements will make. So, I read the report, the traffic write-up, and, you know, I started reading it, and I thought I understood it, and I got to the end, and I'm not so sure. So, I wasn't sure at the end of the day whether what we had was a workable solution that we were settling for, or whether it was the best solution given the circumstances. What's your thoughts on that?
I think there's been a lot of concern, rightly so, of directing traffic through the residential neighborhoods, especially to the west. And Rahide is the, kind of the obvious direct connection, you know, where you would have a direct street from this development to Ninety-Sixth Street. If you look at the overall design of this project, rather than connecting Cedar Dale, which is in alignment with Rahide, and connecting those streets directly, they take that street through a roundabout, and then through a southerly direction, and then further on west, it's actually in alignment with Devon Street. And Devon Street is a local street that doesn't connect directly to Ninety-Sixth Street. So, in terms of through traffic through this development, you don't have that direct connection between Cedar Dale, which is west of this project, and Rahide on the west. They did explore eliminating the street connection that's in alignment with Rahide at Ninetieth Street. They actually developed a development concept with no connection at that location. I know that we as staff had concerns about that because of the impact on the intersection at Devon. And then, their traffic engineer analyzed that as well, and they concluded that it would, it would be too problematic at Devon Street. You'd create an intersection, using engineers' language, it created a level of service F, which we would consider a very poor-performing intersection. So, what they did was they eliminated the street connection at Rahide and replaced it with a private street or a private driveway access that would only serve a portion of the development. The intent being having kind of a back door for the residential portion of this development, having a secondary access that's, I think, important for safety, but really not intended to attract through traffic through the development and direct it into the neighborhood to the west. So, in terms of the overall concerns, I think they worked very hard to address those concerns and came up with a solution that provides access and adequate access into this development. Can't guarantee that you'll have no impact on the neighborhood to the west, but they did address that, I think, that primary concern of directing unnecessary traffic to that Rahide Street, which would be a direct connection west to Ninety-Sixth Street.
And so, would you say this is a workable solution or a good solution?
I think it's a good solution. I think we had concerns about eliminating that access and relying solely on the alignment with Devon.
Okay. Larry, you wanted to, you wanted to address my question regarding new-to-market and cannibalization?
Well, no, and actually, just debt-to-value ratios generally, and how debt's repaid. And I was just going to point out that Market Point, for example, we had thirteen-point-six percent debt-to-value. Why did we allow thirteen-point-six debt-to-value on that particular development? It was that we believed that the sales tax revenue generated from that particular project was going to help offset the public infrastructure that was required along Seventy-Second Street and Giles Road Corridor. And since SIDs can't impose a local option sales tax, which we can't, it makes all the sense in the world for the city, at some point, when there's enough development, both from an ad-vocative real estate tax, you know, tax valuation, and the sales tax generated by this particular project, that the city would do either a partial annexation or a full annexation. And I was just going to point out that for Chip and Lockwood or Royce Enterprises to close on this property, they're going to want to make sure they have a sufficient amount of commercial retail, probably the assisted living in place, probably... amount of commercial retail, uh, probably the assisted living in place, probably the multifamily in place. For this to move forward, we want to make sure it's feasible, just as the city wants to make sure that it's a go. And so when, when this whole development occurs, it's going to come out rel- of the ground relatively quickly with all the various mixed-use components of this particular development. So I think we're just going to find out from an SID perspective and a city perspective looking at annexing this district is with a 6.8% debt-to-value, not 13.7. Now, that was a lot bigger, or a lot, I should say, a lot more retail. In fact, it's 100% retail. This is not 100% retail, but it has significant valuation in the multifamily. For example, the multifamily's, you know, its projected value is $30 million of the 119 million that we talked about. So with the retail component, with the assisted living component, with the multifamily component, with all those things coming out of the ground relatively quickly, I think you're going to see this whole development be attractive for the city to annex fairly quickly, is what I would suggest. And, and that's what we've been talking with, uh, Chris about, and we've been doing kind of studies and analysis of how much sales tax dollars this project would, uh, generate in addition to the edifying real estate tax. And so I was just pointing that out, is all.
Okay. So a different question for you. So as you look at your retail tenants that will be coming in, excuse me, your average lease is, I'm guessing three to five years, something like that? Do you?
Yeah, it'd be 10.
Okay.
With, with obviously, uh, renewals and options to extend, that kind of thing.
Sure. Sure. Okay. Let's see if I have anything else. Not at this second, I won't.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, thank you. So there's been a lot of discussion with regard to 90th Street and, and obviously, this is a preliminary plat, so a lot of those details still need to be worked out. But there's been a question with regard to whether this is a four-lane section or a three-lane section, whether you're moving it to the east, or whether you're moving it to the west. Can you talk a little bit about the increased traffic from the development onto 90th Street and what's, what you're planning to do with regard to that?
A couple of those questions, and I'll turn it over to Chris Rowling as far as traffic volumes, but it's, it's a little bit of both. It's, it's four lanes from Highway 370 to Devon Street, which is the midpoint, and then it's three-lane section from north of Devon all the way to Grunther. So it, it's partly four, partly three. All the right-of-way, though, that needs to be acquired is being dedicated on the east side of 90th Street with this particular plat. So we are dedicating the right-of-way necessary to improve 90th Street, which we all agree is in need of improvement. So that's that, and then I'll turn it over to Chris to talk about traffic volumes on, uh, 90th Street.
Okay. So just to clarify then, so with regard to the existing properties that are on the west side of 90th Street, there'll, there'll be minimal impact to those properties?
There'll be no impact from a right-of-way acquisition perspective. Uh, that, all of the right-of-way will be dedicated with the final plat of this particular development. So nothing is being acquired from any of the property owners on the west side of 90th Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and this is the, uh, traffic exhibit that we put together that kind of shows the lane configurations, and I can let, uh, Chris talk about the lane configurations and also traffic volumes, if you have any questions there.
And signals.
And signals, correct?
Mr. Stube, what's your question for him? Just so there's not a presentation, I want to make sure, since it's council discussion, he's actually answering your question.
Correct. So I want to talk a little bit about the traffic that's being generated from the development and the evaluation that you went through to make a determination as far as what those cross-sections look like, then also with regard to what the configurations of those intersections are, and whether they'll be signalized, or whether that's something that will be determined into the future.
Sure. Um, so my name's Chris Rowling, uh, 2111 South 67th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Um, so as Mr. Stube said, uh, when we go through the traffic evaluation, um, we look at what are the land uses, there's some generally accepted, um, industry-accepted, um, rates that we can apply to different land uses to estimate the number of trips to the site. Um, from there, we can layer that on to the traffic that's already, um, on the right-of-way network and determine, um, what, if any, improvements would need to be, um, done to mitigate any negative impacts to the traffic. Kind of a, a simple explanation for that. We also do look at, um, what are some other developments in the area, what are some other growth that would occur, um, to, uh, other parts of Papillion and other parts of the, the area to help account for, for that growth in traffic as well. So kind of taking all of those things into account, um, 90th Street, as, as Larry's been saying, um, is, it's, he's been calling it a four-lane section up to Devon Drive. Um, and, and in that is technically four lanes wide, um, but from a, kind of a functional standpoint, um, it's really a three-lane section with a, a right-turn lane, kind of continuous right-turn lane, kind of added on to the far, um, east side of the, the intersection, there's one, an opportunity to drop a turn lane, um, between Highway 370 and Devon Drive. And so it kind of accesses continuous right-turn lane for both that first, um, access north of Highway 370 and then drops into Devon Drive as a right-turn lane. So north of there, that's how you get your, um, through, normal, kind of what you would think of as, as a three-lane cross-section. 90th and, um, Highway 370 will be signalized, um, as is, um, Washington Street and Cedardale on the other side of the street, and of course, um, 84th and Highway 370 is signalized as well. And along 84th Street, I'm sorry, yeah, along 84th Street, we would also be, um, installing the northbound dual lefts to account for that additional traffic that would be coming, um, from Highway 370 into the site at that kind of main access point, um, as well as some right-turn lines come, coming from the southbound direction, I'm sorry, yeah, in the southbound direction, um, so on the, the, the west side of the street, um, for the various access points along, um, 84th Street.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Florence.
You know, I, so I have a, a motion to amend, and I know we've already, what's the process here to, to amend the current motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. You know, so, so I continue, one thing, on one hand, I just, uh, want to make sure that this general obligation, uh, debt, and that it be resolved in a way that is, uh, certainly good for the city. And so one of the things I'd like to do is just make sure, uh, that we have a, a motion to allow continued negotiations for an acceptable level. Now, that's broad, but, uh, just so we know that we have to reach an agreement that the city finds acceptable as, as we go forward. Second, I, I am concerned about cannibalization, and I'll tell you why, and I think I brought this up when, when you guys were here three or four weeks ago. You know, you look around, and I remember Walmart sitting down there, uh, you know, on 84th Street, and it sat vacant for, I don't know how many years, years and years and years. Uh, you look at Baker Square and it sits empty. And while we don't want to pick winners and losers, I, I think while, uh, you know, building does influence other builders to come in, I think vacant stores also cause people to say, hey, why is this thing sitting vacant? And you look at Shadow Lake, and I got to tell you, every time I go over there, I'm more than a little concerned that we have lots of, lots, 25% vacancy. You know, and you can look at other retail, you read, I don't know, every other day it seems that retail is taking, uh, a hit, that it is changing. Now, we don't know whether that's long-term or short-term, but we don't know that. And so not knowing that and knowing that we are going to have an SID and how it plays out, I would like to also have an amendment that says we do have, uh, limit the length of time for which the developer can accept new tenants relocating inside the city. However, I think it's reasonable to limit that to a period of time, let's say five years. Your leases run 10 with renewals, you have, uh, new-to-market coming in, I think that's reasonable. Uh, you will then fill that up with folks, and you will then have the ability to, after five years, if folks say, hey, you guys are running a great operation, uh, where we're at is not as good, we'll come to you. So those are my amendments. Uh, I can shorten that up. Continue negotiations on an acceptable level, acceptable level with general obligation debt by the city, and then negotiate an agreement to limit the length of time, five years, for the developer not to accept tenants relocating within the city limits without city council approval. So if someone comes forward to us and makes a solid case, certainly we would entertain that, but otherwise, uh, we would limit it.
Talk a little bit about your intent, though, so we're clear on what we're voting for. Larry had made the comment of, you've got small square-footage tenants, 700, 750, 1200 square-foot things that move around all the time. When you talk cannibalization, I'm assuming you're talking, somehow you're talking a larger, there's, in that motion and in the negotiation, there's some definition of what that agreement is?
So we can, all right, so let's think of a definition. So, so big boxes are, are, uh, you know, your 40,000 square foot, we talked about that. You know, you have, uh, entrepreneur, and let's say an entrepreneur's working out of 1,500 square feet, if I have to pick a number, you know, uh, office space, let's say you're an insurance agent, real estate agent, single office, so 2,500 square feet or less, they're free to move around. So it'd be 2,500 square feet or more.
Okay, and that's.
And I pulled that out of the air, by the way.
So what I heard is, uh, because there are a number of contingencies already outlined in the staff report, um, that the regular motion was, so you're bringing, one, uh, the general obligation debt was already a, uh, uh, the fiscal impact was already a contingency. This is just bringing it very clear that that one's got to be negotiated. And then the idea of some agreement regarding cannibalization is a new contingency that's not in the staff report, so that is a new one. So that is a motion that's on the floor.
Yes.
Um, if, if it's clear, we can ask for some clarification. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mungard, second? Okay. Council discussion on the motion to amend. See none, please vote on the motion to amend. Ms. Kluk, Mr. Stube. Please re-vote.
Four yes, three nays by Stube, Mungard, and Gaines.
Motion passes. So, motion as amended? We're just getting a real quick curve. Motion passes. The question was if it's a majority of the entire council or the majority of the ones that are present, and the opinion is it's of those that are present, so motion passes. Yes, sir?
A little bit, because I'm a little confused by what just happened here. So was the amendment just approval, or was that approval of Mr. Florence's amendments?
That was approval of the motion to amend, so now we have an amended motion, and now we'll vote on that.
Okay, so that didn't actually approve the amendment?
That's correct. We're going to take that vote now.
Okay, that's, I want, I thought that was the case, I just, I didn't want to get too far here.
No. And that's a good question, because we do want to make sure we're, we're following the process. So the motion is amended. Any further conversation is the motion as amended. Mr. Mungard.
Well, okay, the motion is amended. Okay. Well, I, I voted against, or I expressed opposition to the plan when it was first brought up, uh, because it did not have a sufficient focus on office space. Since that time, your revised, uh, plan doesn't do a whole lot to alleviate that concern, but it does some. And I'll just say that, um, I'm going to vote for the approval of the preliminary plat. But, um, I want to express my continued concern that we, it's too easy to focus on the retail and not on the non-retail jobs that Papillion needs. We need those kinds of jobs. We need people who are going to stay in town here to, to go to work, people who come to town here to go to work in places that are not retail. And so the, the comments of Mr. Williams, I think, are very appropriate, because that is something we do have to keep in mind. But I guess I've decided that this is not the development and the place to draw that line and, and say, no, we're not going to approve this, this develop is, development is fine. But I just want to emphasize to the council that is, will be my position in the future, that even though we don't pick winners and losers, we do have zoning, um, authority, and we do get to decide how much land in, in this area gets set aside for retail and how much gets set aside for something else. And I think that's an appropriate thing to do, and we need to, well, while we're doing that, we need to keep a focus on, we need to encourage, uh, non-retail job areas in Papillion. Uh, so that will be my position. I look back to early 1990s when Mayor Goodwin and Goodman and the council at that point, I think, had the foresight to create the Papillion Business Park, which we, of course, has still been trying to fill. But that, at that point, they had the focus that, okay, we need to do things that bring jobs into Papillion, and that has no retail to it at all. So even though I'm not in favor of picking winners and losers in the retail business, I hope you're, I hope you're not a loser in your retail area, and I hope Shadow Lake is not a loser because of, uh, the new retail. Uh, but I do encourage the council to keep that in mind in the future, that, um, office space is something that we can legitimately dedicate areas for, and we ought to focus on that. But I'll vote in favor of this.
And it is relevant, your comment, and I just want to remind the council, we did have the office study done last year by the Hoffman Strategy Group, the Site Selection Group that, uh, does market studies. For the public, that is on the city's website under the Economic Development Section, and that did demonstrate that in the Papillion Trade Area, um, they could justify what the growth we're having upwards to a half a million square feet of Class A and Class B at some point in time. And that's, uh, generally proves itself out when you start looking at Omaha and Lincoln as a single metro area, and from a time-travel perspective, Papillion is in the middle of that combined metro area, and with the low labor force, there are employers that need access to both labor markets, and I think that's some of the reason we're seeing, what we're seeing in Papillion out on the Highway 50 corridor. So, Mr. Mungard, your point's very well taken, and we've got that study to prove that.
Chip. So I don't think it's insignificant, our first phase of office is 80,000 feet, which on a five-to-one ratio is 400 employees. If you look at your office study, you've really, other than SAC coming to town, you've kind of absorbed about 2,000 to 3,000 feet a year. That's, you know, just a rough number, that's 40 years' worth of absorption. I'm not saying you won't continue to absorb more, and that would be assuming I get all the office and, and I'm also going to be competing with your Papillion Business Park, which you can give land away, and I can't. So you will be in a great position that way, but we, I don't consider 80,000 feet to start, and we have room for more if the market demands it, is even close to insignificant, and from the type of buildings we build, an 80,000-foot investment is probably, you know, somewhere between 15 and 20 million dollars. I mean, it's, it is really not, the only reason it feels like it's, and I think you said this at the last, um, council meeting, is that it's, it's, I don't want to say the back door or whatever, the second thought, or it wasn't, it was an afterthought, is, it's not an afterthought at all. In fact, it's what I do 50% of the time, but it won't drive the development. We don't have an anchor office user. We need the apartments, the retail, the restaurants, to get our office users. So I, it can't be my leader without an anchor. If you can bring me the next SAC, that would be a whole different game. But so we are not considering it insignificant at all, at, at the size for Papillion.
And I'll tell you, you did convince me that what you're, the office space that you're providing is a first step, and, uh, that's why I'm going to vote for it. But, but, you know, it's so easy to look at houses and retail, and, you know, I, I've been here long enough that I, I look back to when the first retail came into, you know, not when Target came in and how excited we were, and now I look at it and say, well, that's nice, but we're getting retail. Uh, that's not the whole community. We need to be a complete community.
We are committed to office. Now, the market will tell us a little bit of that, but we are not looking at that as the, is the backside of this. This is completely what we do, and we want to continue to do it, and we want to bring office here, but it just can't lead the charge. I'd love to do more office here.
Well, I'm willing to roll the dice with you, and I hope it works out.
Ms. Kluk.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the hard work. Um, when you first brought this forward, it was not at all in line with what I thought was going to go in that corner. I've seen some serious movement towards making it more pedestrian-friendly, better for our youth, better for our kids. That's a big issue with me, um, especially being a new grandma, that I really want things to work for the children and be better for this growing community. I appreciate, as Councilman Mungard said, you've brought some more office buildings. We are getting some more diversity in what's going on with the job opportunities out here. So I greatly appreciate it. And Larry, may I ask you what's on your mind?
I, I, I just, I don't want, I don't want us to get too far down the road without, you know, talking about, you know, I, I appreciate the, the concern of retail and retail shifts and people moving. and people moving different directions, but just to show you sort of how and why that's untenable as far as putting any kind of a, a non-compete on a particular development. What if we went back to this slide, which shows Papillion's shopping centers? If you were going to give Shadow Lake Center some kind of a non-compete, then where's Settlers' Creek? Why wouldn't they want to be part of that and say, wait a minute, you can't shift people away from me either? And then what if Market Point comes in and says, wait a minute, you can't shift people away from me either? What if we say, that ought to go reciprocal? Shadow Lake shouldn't pull anything from us either. And then what if you get the old Target out there and says, you know, by the way, if you can't shift anything from me-
Real quick, Larry, we already took the vote on it, but just a point of clarification. His motion, I don't think, was specific to Shadow Lake. It was within city limits. The, the cannibalization was within city limits, not Shadow Lake specifically, so, but I think it was to negotiate an agreement, and I think the indication was there are some models of that, so we'll work out that agreement.
I, I would have to say to you, that would be incredibly unorthodox, and I've never seen anything like that. And, and the problem we have, again, anything inside the limits, I mean, think about that. It's-
That's, that's what will be negotiated. That's what the motion was, was to negotiate the agreement, and that motion did pass, so we're going to have to negotiate that point. Not in the public hearing tonight, but staff will work with you to negotiate that point.
Then I would ask for a motion to reconsider, because that could have a monster problem on this development. That's all I'm trying to suggest.
Thank you. Mr. Jaworski.
Well, I want to touch on that a little bit, too, what Troy brought up, because I feel that as my job sitting at this seat is to protect the citizens of Papillion, and there is some logic to what Troy brought up. There is some logic to what Mr. Williams talked about. And if we do bring this up and pass it, which I, I'm going to support, and for the simple reason is we're protecting us. And you guys are sitting there saying that you're not going after anybody, everybody you're bringing in new, so it's really not going to hurt you guys. It's going to give us peace of mind. So I, I think everything we've done here, you guys have done a great job, fantastic. So I mean, it's just a little more negotiating, and we're going to get to the, get to the end where everybody's happy. And I think as far as being on the council, it is our job to protect the citizens of Papillion. So I am going to be supporting Troy's amendment. Thanks.
Any other council discussion?
You know, I just, I just have these final thoughts, that, you know, I'm going to vote for this. And I will tell you, probably like a lot of folks that, that live, you know, bordering this, you know, you go by that big corner, and it's, you know, I've been living here 20-plus years, and I'd like it to remain a farm, and that's not practical. I would have liked to have great, big office buildings. Councilman Mumgarth and I talked about that same thing. That's not practical either. I think that, that this is a good project, and it has, you have done your absolute best to put together the right mixed-use program, and I'm ready to support it.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote on the motion as amended.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item, get to the right one. Item F. Are we on two or three? Item F.2, Resolution R.17-0227. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation from city center and medium-density residential to mixed-use one for the property legally described as part of the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 34, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with tax lot 5, a tax lot located in the east half of the northeast quarter of Section 34, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of Washington Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Royce Enterprises, Inc., Papillion Commons. This is a continuation of the public hearing from December 19th. Proponents? And again, previous testimonies will carry forward.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Joven, 11440 West End Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. The development team is here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any neutral? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R.17-0227? Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F.3, Ordinance 1794, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from G.C. General Commercial to O. Office for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot 30 of Section 26, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South 72nd Street and Cornhusker Road. The applicant is the city of Papillion, lots 9 through 11, Papillion Business and Technology Park. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1794? Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F.4, Resolution R.18-0001, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot 30 in the northeast quarter of Section 26, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South 72nd Street and Cornhusker Road. The applicant is the city of Papillion, lots 9 through 11, Papillion Business and Technology Park. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R.18-0001? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F.5, Ordinance 1800, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of certain unimproved real property consisting of approximately 1.87 acres located in the Papillion Business and Technology Park on the southwest corner of 72nd Street and Cornhusker Road, Papillion, Nebraska, legally described as part of Tax Lot 30, except parts taken for plat 261412 in Sarpy County, Nebraska, depicted as parcel one on Exhibit A attached to the ordinance incorporated therein to Family Emergency Rooms LLC, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1800? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Florence. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F.6, Resolution R.18-0023, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land being part of Tax Lot 1, Tax Lot 2A, Tax Lot 2B, and Tax Lot 3A, all located in part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter and part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 28, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast quarter of Whitmus Drive and Lincoln Road, and the applicant is Woodland Homes, Granite Lake Phase 2. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R.18-0023? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? And the applicant is here. Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F.7, Resolution R.18-0024, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Granite Lake subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R.18-0024? Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Items F.8, 9, and 10, we already took care of. No committees met, but I do want to remind you, we had the annual reorganization of committees. You should have a letter at your chair. Tried to accommodate everybody's desire for committees they were interested in. If I missed one, I apologize, but I think I got them all. Kept, kept some consistency between committees, but also made sure there was some change amongst them for some new ideas, and then also tried to make sure that every single ward was represented on each committee. So those are the new assignments. And then specific to the audit committee, my philosophy there has always been to get a 50% turnover, carry two people over, so any ideas or issues or concern that were talked about before, those carry forward, but then also to make sure that we get two new sets of eyes from an audit perspective. So we have the new ones there. Couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Yes. Oh, we got some students here. You guys got to come up and introduce yourself. Come on up. Introduce yourself, and what brings you out?
Hello, I'm Robert Price. We're here from Mr. Keller's American Government class, and we're just here to observe the city council meeting, see what, how everything works, and just what our government's about.
I'm Brandon Lou.
And I'm Eli Bowlby.
Thanks for coming out, guys. You got a good report to give. There is an audit committee meeting on February 20th, so the people that are new to that committee, make a note of that. Just the last couple of weeks, Ms. Koemer, Ms. Myers, Ms. Hansen, Mr. Moran, Mr. Alberts, myself, met with the pro board, there, as they're making plans for the next couple of years and their policies and their programming, make sure they were updated on the community center, so we could be working together on those policies, because they do, they are a preferred user in our field use policy, and that'll carry forward. So we met with the whole board. Mr. Gow and Ms. Myers and I also met with Laura Swartz from the Community Foundation, talked some specific things around Veterans Park, and I think the Community Foundation has a desire to continue a role there in seeing that grow and evolve, and so we talked about some next phases is there. A number of us from staff also met with Mr. Jensen, former city planner, Steve Jensen, who's now a consultant. He was hired by the South Sarpy Sewer Agency to put together a growth plan, which, which portions of that sewer get phased in when on the south side. And so we met with him to talk specifically about Papillion's ideas and goals that, that we would see for that, so he can account for that. A number of us also attended the Sarpy County Economic Development's annual meeting, and as Ms. Myers mentioned, the city of Papillion, along with the other jurisdictions in Sarpy, were recognized this year for Partners in Economic Development Award. Usually it's given to one personal organization, but we all got it because of this coming together on the Sewer Agency. I think they all left, because the meeting went so long, but I was going to recognize them. Mr. Perkins, Mr. Carson, and Mr. Hinton were here. In the consent agenda, they were reappointed. Mr. Hinton and Mr. Perkins on the tree board, and Mr. Carson on the planning commission, so just want to thank them for that as well. Any other council comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
We are adjourned.